The Agenda Review and Disposition. Anything to add to tonight's agenda?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Under other business, just Election Day. I've handed out to the board members and there are some copies for the public. A memo of understanding about how we do business on Election Day. That's with the town and the high school.
Minutes of the October 1st, 2018 meeting. I'll entertain a motion to accept a stated.
Second.
Second. Go in favor.
Aye.
Okay. Privilege of the floor. Anyone care to speak this evening? It's a quiet group. Principals report. Julie?
Well, I think one of the best things going on in our school right now is the Writers Workshop. We have been working on the Writers Workshop for three years and I've been fortunate to go in and see some of the work in action of our students and our teachers. So, I thought I'd invite a few of our teachers tonight to share a little bit about what the Writers Workshop is and what that's all about. I have second grade teachers, Leanne Stokie and Michelle Appaliano, and third grade teacher, Christine Sterner, and fourth grade teacher, Jessica Watchkin.
Great. We want to thank you for inviting us. Michelle and I this summer had the opportunity to go to the Teachers College of Reading and Writing, which was at Columbia University. And we also had the pleasure of working with and meeting two of the authors of the units of study in the Writers Workshop, which were Lucy Cockens herself as well as Amanda Harmon. And it has really transformed the way that, the methods and the way that we all teach writing in our classroom. What we know about writing development is that students need extensive opportunities to write about topics that they really care about. And that is a huge shift for us. They're spending most of their time doing their writing. They also need explicit instruction and feedback that helps them improve their writing. And we're going to talk about the mini lessons that are 10 minutes that go with each of the sessions. So, the unit of studies that we have are narrative writing, opinion writing, and informational writing. And our team will share the essential components of the Writers Workshop with you.
Okay. So, I thought I'd share with you what, something that I hang in my classroom and, let me show you guys back here. But it shows exactly the makeup of Writers Workshop. Where you have a five to 10 minute mini lesson, and that's directed by the teacher, that's giving a specific teaching point on what we're working on today, along with 40 minutes of independent writing, and then a five minute share at the end. During that 40 minutes of independent writing, we're really building their writing stamina. Just like athletes work to build their muscles and become stronger, we're asking our students to build their writing muscles and become better writers. And then also during that time, that's when we're conferring, we're doing one-on-one conferences, small group, where students are getting valuable feedback. And we all know that once you get feedback, you become a stronger writer. During the shared time, they're able to showcase their writing. And then also the teacher can highlight a teaching point that you might be working on in their, in the student's writing right there. So, it gives us more opportunities to teach as well. So, that's pretty much the makeup of the Writers Workshop. And I'm going to give it over to Christine, who's going to talk about the mini lesson.
Thanks, Michelle. So, I love this visual. And while the mini lesson is only 10 minutes long, it's sort of the most, one of the most crucial components to the whole workshop itself. It's that time where we sit and we pull the students really close and we have the floor. So, they have to listen for just 10 minutes and we time ourselves to make sure we don't go over because we talk a lot. So, we have the complete undivided attention. And we're all using similar language. So, we're saying things like, "Today, I'm going to teach you." And we'll hang up exactly what the lesson would be for that day. And we always end it with the same, "Writers, off you go." And so, they know that's their cue to then go and start writing. The best metaphor I think we could think of for the workshop is a ski instructor. So, getting off of the chair left where there are students behind them and turning around and saying, "Okay, this is what I want you to do today." There's kind of a lot at stake because they're about to go down the mountain, so they really need to pay attention. They have their undivided attention. And they're telling them what they're going to do. You're going to ski around these bales, and I want you to watch me. And then we'll model for them what they're going to do. And the students are watching intently because, again, there's a lot at stake. They have to know what they're doing. And then the instructor goes down and turns back and says, "Okay, off you go." And now the students are really being independent because they kind of have to, right? They're not going to come back up and help them. And so, it really lets them challenge themselves, but with such guided teaching. One of the things we've really noticed is the stamina. Students are really sitting down and they're writing. So, with that, I'm going to move over to Jeff.
So, writing stamina is one of the major benefits of the Lucy Cockens piece. We've noticed that students will, who may have struggled with writing, are now heading off to their seats and their heads are bent down, their pencils are scratching on their paper, and they're constantly engaged throughout. And there's a lot of components of the Writers Workshop that help to support that. So, one of those is the pre-writing. We do a lot of pre-writing. And this is before the kids even start drafting. They plan out their stories and they'll know exactly where their story is going. They hit on all of those major pieces before they start to draft. We also have a really authentic audience. So, they meet with writing partners. We publish their works and we have a publishing party to celebrate that. And it looks different at each grade level, but it's really authentic for them. It's not just turning in a paper to the teacher and that's your only audience. And there's also a lot of resources. So, if a student gets stuck, they're able to check the anchor charts in the classroom. They have mini checklists. They can check in with their writing partner, and then mentor texts as well. And in fourth grade, they're expected to write for 40 minutes uninterrupted, which seems like a really long time for a 10-year-old. But they're able to produce a page or four pages within one writing session. And it's been a really beautiful shift. So, I brought two samples of writers. I just wanted to quickly share with you because I thought they were really powerful. The first is a pre-Lucy Cockens writing sample. And these students are very similar in their writing. So, the student writes, it's titled, "The Pool." She says, "Last summer, a girl and her sister got a pool. They brought it home and they asked if they could put it up. They put it up because mom and dad told them that they could. After they got home, mom and dad left because they had to get dinner. The girls called mom and dad because the pool was broken. It was a blow-up pool." So, this was before we had this program. And she does a good job of sequencing and telling when things are happening. But with the shift, and this is a very similar student, we're seeing things like this piece of writing. So, his reads, "I throw a rock as I walk. That's when I see it, a towering moose charging at me. I turn around and I throw myself inside slamming the door behind me. I run into the living room, then I heard a crash. The moose knocked the door down. It clumsily charged down the stairs at me." So, we're seeing a huge shift, not only in their stamina and how much they're producing, but also the quality of their writing as well. So, we've received a lot of awesome feedback from the students. They really feel positively about their writing, and they're really empowered writers as well.
Yeah. So, I had an opportunity to interview one of my students. And I promise, I swear, I did not coach her. At all. And I know what you're going to say, but I did not coach her. So, whenever you're ready.
She's right behind you. This is Eva.
She'll be behind you. Yeah. Here we go.
So, Eva, tell me a little bit about Writers Workshop.
Well, it's a place where you can write a lot of things. You make lots of detail and you just have to think about what you're doing.
Like what helps you think about what you're doing?
Well, instead of, well, instead of talking with your neighbor sitting by you, you can, like, think about what you're going to write.
Okay. How do you, how do you think about what you're going to write? What do you use? Do you use any tools to help you?
What about you? Plan it first. Don't write it. Don't write it first.
Okay. So, you've learned how to plan your stories and then...
Action feeling.
Okay. What about you as a writer? Do you think you're a better writer than you were in the beginning of the year?
Yeah. I was not good at writing.
What? What do you mean? You're a great writer.
No. I wasn't last year.
So, how are you better this year?
Well, writing more helps me get better at it because I just keep writing and writing and see how I'm doing every single day. I will get better every single day because I keep practicing.
Okay. Does it help that I come around and meet with you?
Yeah.
Yeah? What about the small groups? When we meet as a small group?
Um, yeah, that helps.
And share time?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Eva.
So, I just wanted to pause. A big part of this whole process that I see is that conversation, that conferring. And it takes a special teachers, I think, to do that. And so, we're really fortunate that, you can just imagine, you know, having any of these teachers go up to you and talk to you about your writing is very inspirational. And I keep saying that, you know, I worry that if Lucy Cockens saw them, they might take them away. So, they're superstars. So, thank you very much for sharing and just wanted to recognize that process in our school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have had a very busy October, a very great October. And one of the things, I was just talking to Kayden Sanborn, the Student Council President, as he was walking out, I'm like, you know, you're mentioned a lot in the school report, primarily because they've been leading a lot in the school this month. We had Red Ribbon Week. Every year, the middle school takes time to reflect and to act on making healthy choices through participating through Red Ribbon Week, a national campaign to support schools and families in drug prevention activities. PES students were super creative with door decorating messages about being drug-free. A full moon hike around Quincy Bog was an example of making a healthy choice and a fun choice. And the grand finale was a pep rally to celebrate all the healthy choices our students are making by joining different athletics, technology student association, Nano Rymo, and of course, the academics. We sent, Kelly and I sent a letter home and we shared that children who talk with their teens regularly about drugs and healthy choices are significantly less likely to use them. So, just encouraging those conversations with students. Again, the Student Council were leaders. The Halloween, always a big time here at Plymouth Elementary School, the kindergarten through grade two Halloween parade was wonderful. We had Harry Potter, Dorothy from The Wizard of Oz, a pirate, a hot dog, a monarch butterfly, and lots of unicorns and lots of superheroes marched through the halls and over to the SAU office, leaving a trail of smiles. In addition to the parade, the Middle School Student Council organized two safety pep rallies, one for the primary wing and then one for the intermediate wing. Each executive board member had a role and they were also dressed up and they were very motivating, a lot of fun, very engaging, and it was very interactive. One of the Student Council's goals this year is to really interact with the whole school and do more and more of those sorts of activities. So, I wanted to say thank you to them for that. And I just, again, very grateful that we had four police officers here to support the safety. It was a great, it was a great moment. And then our cafeteria supported Halloween, celebrated Halloween. There's a great children's book called The Gruffalo, and they used that as a premise for the lunch that day. And they dressed up as each character. There's a fox, an owl, and a mouse in a gruffalo. And Austin Jacobs, who's the head, the director, he dressed up as the gruffalo. So, the kids really appreciated it. The directions were, the decorations were awesome. And I really appreciated the creativity and the literary connection and the very much the student-centeredness of it. I did want to pause. It's later in the agenda, the first grade, so I can wait to do that. And then I just wanted to recognize, and they happen to be here, Mrs. Babbitt and Ms. Ray Fues. They both applied for the Donors Choose, which is like a small scholarship fund. Ms. Babbitt, the SOAR teacher for our middle schoolers, received $120 for calming tools for behaviors, for behavior support. And Ms. Ray Fues received $255 for her project, Flexible Seating for Flexible Thinkers. There were items called Lernature, which I thought was kind of cool, stability balls, and cozy floor seat cushions. And it's, they're really special places for learning. Just upcoming dates, there's an invitation for our Thanksgiving lunch, which kudos to Kelly for doing a lot of the legwork for that. That's this Wednesday and Thursday. This is a big week. We have Election Day, the luncheons, and then we have our Veterans Day ceremony on Friday, which we always look forward to as well. No school on Monday for Veterans Day, and then no school November 21st through the 23rd for Thanksgiving. So, moving on, our fall sports have now officially ended with all of our teams having some of their end-of-the-season gatherings to celebrate. I know football still has theirs coming up this Wednesday. All of our teams played really hard, showed a lot of improvement over the course of the seasons. Just a few highlights, the football team plays in a very competitive Granite State League, and so they, they had some tough losses this year, but great group of kids and kept plugging away and finally paid off when they got a win this year over Kingswood. So, I was excited for them. It was good to see. Our field hockey team went the entire season undefeated, 15-0. So, great, great feat for them. And again, Deb McManus, Alyssa Avery just do a great job with those girls. They had 37 girls out there between the white and the blue teams. So, a lot of kids to manage and they did wonderful with them. And our cross-country team hosted the 10th Annual Invitational here. The nice piece was it was right here on our campus this year, kind of a revised course that kept the kids on a double loop right here at school and the opportunity to see them in a variety of different places. Parents could essentially stand in one central spot and see them at least four different times passing through, which was nice. And on that day, our boys placed second overall and the girls' team ended up taking first place for the invite. So, great running day for them. They went on October 20th to Cobrown Academy down in Northwood for the middle school cross-country championship. And again, had a wonderful day. Nathaniel Gervais, if you haven't seen him, he's a sixth grader, and that kid can run like the wind. And he ended up coming in second place and was a state runner-up of our, about over 200 runners running the course that day. And he ran it, the two-mile course, in 10 minutes and 37 seconds. And then also scoring for the team, yeah, 10:37.
Two miles?
Two miles. He's fun to watch. Leo Ebner, Grady Maronowski, Carver Grasso, Paul Mason, with their scoring also helped the boys to capture the 14th place overall out of 32 teams there that day. And then also for the girls, Reagan Sutherland, Addie England, and Kelsey Maine were the top runners for the girls, along with, oh, I'm sorry. They placed individually 14th, 30th, and 31st, and that earned the girls' team an eighth-place finish overall. So, good for them as well. So, fun, fun fall. We're moving on to our winter sports just around the corner with our basketball teams starting up on the 13th and 14th. And wrestling and Nordic ski will start after the Thanksgiving break on November 26th. Right now, the sign-up numbers are very promising all the way around for all the winter sports. And we also have physicals that will be offered again by Plymouth Pediatrics here in our nurse's office on Thursday, November 15th. So, moving on to the next season. Just a few updates for the Safety Committee. We have another meeting coming up this Wednesday, the 7th. To date, we have completed drills in terms of our bus evacuation. We've had a secure classroom drill, and then we've had a total of four fire drills, with the most recent one being held on October 22nd. Just as another side added, which we'll be discussing more with the committee, I was in touch with the bus company, just looking to see if they were going to be reviewing any of our bus stops. And the bus company has been very mindful of some of the unfortunate tragedies that we've seen on the news lately involving some of the bus accidents and students having to cross the street. So, they are being proactive. They are reviewing all of their routes and the stops, which is great to hear. And then also, I know that we'll probably be talking a little bit about it, but our voting will go on here in the gym tomorrow, November 6th. And I've already been in touch with Chief LaFave, just in terms of parking and just overall safety for the day. Have also reviewed with our faculty and staff just the protocol for the day, safety reminders, and police will be on-site to help out in the parking lot. And then just internally covering the gym and the lower hallway during the voting. So, we should be in good shape.
Time for a question. A little over a year ago, the bus services contractor was having staffing issues. Has there been any issue this year?
Knock on wood. It's been very good here. Yeah.
SAU wide, it's been pretty good. They brought in folks at different times and they rented buses from other companies to do some trips in some places. But they've done, I think they've done a much better job this year.
And the overall crew, I think, of drivers, you know, we have a, we have a really good crew of drivers that come here every day for our kids. You know, they're kid-friendly, they're proactive, they communicate well with us, and they help each other out. You know, we have had just a few situations where a bus has not been available. Somebody had a family emergency and so they were down a driver, but they banded together and we split bus rides and make it all happen. So, yeah.
Great team.
Next. Consent items, claims and payroll. You all signed off? Correspondence?
No official correspondence.
Discussion items, grade one, staffing update.
Julie's just going to go over and contain in your agenda, it's an outline of Julie. So, she's going to walk through where we are. 18 students in each section?
18, 18 and 17. The enrollment. Actually, 17 and 17.
17 and 17.
17 and 17. And I do have the, I do have the enrollment there as well. Basically, just meeting on a regular basis with Karen and Kristen, Mrs. McLeod and Mrs. Kilduff, and including Ms. Switzer, who's our reading person, and the special ed staff, just to look closely, you know, really at the needs of the students and making sure we're making the, you know, meeting those needs as opposed to looking at the numbers so much. And we have a great staff here, so I know that. The special ed staff has pitched in to work some real specifics with students. We, Ms. Switzer, works about 45 minutes each day in each class, taking four students who are, who might be struggling with reading and getting a, you know, a good 15 minutes dose every single day, which is, goes a long way over time. She's also scheduled to go into the classrooms at another time just for pure literacy. So, you know, they're getting a lot of support from the literacy, literacy person. As far as math, I've asked Mr. Ramsey, who's our math coach here in the building, to work with the, work with the teachers, more with the technology piece. We have a program called Dream Box that's about problem solving, really perhaps for the beyond, beyond students, the students who might need to be challenged. So, there's that resource in there as well. And then we did move on Tuesday, Emma Duggan, who was in Sarah Carlson's class as a maternity leave sub. She moved in there to help support the both teachers. So, she has a schedule, she spends most of the mornings in with Mrs. McLeod right now. She has lunch recess supervision. And then in the afternoon, she works in Mrs. Kilduff's class. And during their specials time, she kind of goes back and forth and works on things like, you know, preparing materials. So, overall, I think it's, I think it's working really, you know, really well. I think we're, we're making strides and there's been a lot of support in there.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Disco Year 19 budget update.
I just took some action tonight on Ms. Duggan. The budget is basically very tight, as we expected. Basically, it's frozen, but we have everything that we need, everything that was voted on. And so, there's not a lot of flex at all, but that's where we are. So, we'll get through the year just fine.
With nothing left to do?
Nothing.
Disco Year 20 budget timetable?
Yes. Attached in your packet was just a budget timetable that we will give you draft one of the budget on December 3rd. And that will be an overview that we'll do for you. At the board's direction, we'll put three teachers in each, at each grade level. And then based on enrollment, you can decide what you want to do. But the initial budget will have three professionals at each grade level. And the middle school will have certifications that we need. January 7th, we'll work on the budget. That'll be a great night for public input and you may, if you want, you can be again during the month of January. February 4th would be the board meeting at 6:00 and then the public budget hearing after that at 7:00. We will present the budget and warrant articles. You take input that night and you can adjust the budget based on that input. When we leave that night, that'll be the budget and the warrant articles that are posted. And then the school district meeting would be on Monday, March 4th. The board will meet at 6:00 and then the district meeting would be at 7:00 here in the gym. All right?
Membership and ETC.
Yes. It's that time of year where the ETC has announced, and I think there have been tryouts already. Plymouth has always had a relationship with the ETC, and I just wanted to verify that Plymouth wants to continue that relationship with the ETC.
You need that in motion?
Yes, please.
I'd like to train a motion to continue our relationship with ETC. So, move. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done.
Thank you.
Other business, Election Day?
Yes. We sent along, I left in your spot, a memo of understanding with the town of Plymouth and Plymouth Regional High School because the land across the street is owned by Plymouth Regional High School, which Plymouth is 25% owned, the high school, yet that's the political supervision that owns it. This came, this memo came about, I think the date is '06. Michael, you were the chairman back in '06. It's been around. And basically, it's an understanding in the parties. We can walk down it, there are a couple copies out for the public, but I'll just read some of the highlights. There shall be no electioneering in the front of the elementary school building, which includes adjacent sidewalks, parking lot, lawn areas. So, the front of the building is election free, and the police will enforce that. The town's police department will enforce parking restrictions at PES during the election to allow only voters and people with school business to park in the lot. At the discretion of the moderator, supporters, electioneers, protesters, and members of the media, unknown to school or town officials, shall find suitable parking off-site. So, and that's enforced by the police department. Town's police department will provide sufficient personnel to ensure that all voters and those electioneering are not entering or exiting Plymouth Elementary through the main entrance. All voters shall enter and exit through the rear entrance. Police department will provide sufficient personnel to ensure the electioneering is confined to the area designated for the activity, which is in the back. And the Plymouth School District may cancel school on Presidential Election Day. And we have done that for the last two Presidential Election Days. And this was signed off by the chairman of the board, Tim Narrow at the time, Mike, and then Susan Judd, who was the chair at the high school at the time. And then there's one more page, the voting procedures. If we were to keep the building open in the presidential election day, we have done that If we were to keep the building open in the presidential year, there are some procedures, but we historically closed that because of the high volume. So that's the, there was a memo of understanding, those are the rules that we play by. Amy had contacted me in regards to the history of this. Yeah, we've had, we've had some history, but recently, very good history.
Has there been a presidential election when we have used these procedures?
Yes.
And was it found to be adequate?
Presidential election?
Yeah. Were these procedures outlined, found to be adequate for handling the volume of the election?
On a presidential, we opted, we've opted just to close.
Has there been one where the school has stayed open?
Presidency? Not since, not since probably '04, probably, no, probably from '08 on, we probably have not. So probably '04 or '06. Just not on a presidential.
Yeah, there's just a Norbert Summala.
Sure.
It's understandable.
And I did get an email that Brian Dutell asked me to read to the school board. Dear Plymouth Elementary School Board, I understand after speaking with PES administration and Plymouth Chief of Police Steve LaFave, that PES will not be canceled for the midterm elections tomorrow, Tuesday, November 6th. I also understand that historically, this voting day has never been canceled because traditionally, there are not that many people who come out to vote as opposed to a presidential election. I believe we need to adapt with the specific situations that are presented to us. It's reported that there will be historic numbers of people going out to vote this Tuesday. We cannot afford to always do what we've done in the past. We need to continue to be proactive, protect our children from potential threats. I would categorize Tuesday's election as a safety risk for our school. Our police chief in Plymouth agrees 100% with this and has always suggested that PES cancel school whenever the building is used for voting, simply from a safety perspective. We should always take seriously what our chief of public safety suggests. As both a parent and an employee of Plymouth Elementary School, I appreciate you considering this perspective. Sincerely, Brian Dutell.
Kelly, you had a conversation with the chief?
Yeah, I mean, he's, I think he does feel that we use the school for voting, that the school shouldn't be open. But he also is very mindful that they will be here, they will make sure that things are covered. I talked with him, with Gary Miller, Chief Clogston, as to how we're going to kind of segregate, close things off. And as I said, you know, kind of put the word out to the staff and all of that too. So we're ready to move forward and, you know...
Well, we were never formally contacted by anybody with those concerns. We just...
Kind of, kind of late to be...
Well, we have the memo, we're staying home and we'll follow those. We're constant. I mean, Kelly spoke to the whole gang this week, so.
And I think going forward, it's something to consider for the future.
Absolutely. I think that when we do the school calendar, we have a conversation about it, but, you know, the rhetoric now is more so than in years past. But every time, I mean, we have a lot of, we have a lot of voting, we have town meeting day, we have primaries, so you get into five or six days, so.
I'd be, if we were going to look at closing the school for every election, I would suggest the town find another location. I'm not in favor of shutting down school for every election that happens.
I agree with that.
This has been, yeah, it's not always been at the school.
Right. It doesn't need to be at the school. It happens to be convenient if it can happen when the student is, when classes in session, but I'm not sure that we need to let the students out for every election.
Any more discussion?
Concerns more about this particular midterm election though. Yeah.
Yeah, in general, just because, although the, you know, it's understandable because although the chief, the police are here essentially coming, so.
It was only brought to my attention on Friday, talking with Mr. Dutell.
As I said, nobody, nobody contacted.
And then I moved forward with talking with Mr. Chief LaFave on Friday and, you know, putting out the information and here we are on Monday, so.
Privilege of the floor.
Just to understand what the setup is on Election Day, some here after hours generally. Do they have the gates closed at the back hallways so the public can't come up the hallways at daytime?
Yes.
And the front doors are still locked?
Yes.
First of all, my children would like to thank the board and the school. Somebody fixed the basketball hoop outside and especially my fourth grade daughter, she's a whole ball basketball. So thank you. Also, I was wondering about the SA, sorry, SAU board meeting that should be coming up, I believe, next month? What the date was and who's representing for that?
It's a, I don't have the date right off the top. It'll be published, it's around, it's, it's a Thursday night, might be about December 13th or...
That's the meeting.
The meeting. Yeah. It'll be at the high school and it'll begin at 6:00. So I think it's Thursday the 13th. Do you have a calendar there, Chief?
I think it's November 20th. That's what I have.
Well, that's a, that's a budget overview. There's no other business but the board reviewing a budget. The public, the public hearing on budget and commenting on PES is, I think it's Thursday or 13th.
That is a Thursday, yeah.
Thursday the 13th, 6:00 at the high school. Yeah. All, all, Plymouth School Board, all 47 board members from all the boards are invited to be there. So there's no, it's not a representative. We try and get a quorum, which is one person from each, well, quorum is six boards, but we try and get seven, seven, eight, nine boards with a couple of members from each.
But it's one member for, a quorum is split one member for each of the seven boards?
Yes, yeah. We can get, if we could say, that's generally, there's generally 15 or 20 people there. You all?
Support and holler. We were talking about the discussion items and the fiscal year 20 budget timetable.
Right.
Mentioned three teachers per level is what you guys have in the budget. And then you mentioned a couple of things and then I heard the word certifications.
Middle school cert. All, all, middle schools?
Yeah.
Yes, for grade seven and eight.
The teachers?
Teachers need to be certified in specific content areas, whereas for grades K through six, they need a general certification.
I just wanted to ask about paraprofessionals and teaching aides that are employed by this particular school. Are we allowed to know how many of each we have?
Sure.
How many paraprofessionals do we have?
I think there are, here, maybe about 20.
I think, yeah, about between 20 and 23.
Just paraprofessionals?
Yes.
Okay. And then what about the teaching aides?
Well, they would be included in that.
They're included, okay. So there's no distinction then between a paraprofessional and a teaching aide here at school?
Well, there's the same, you're talking about the same. Paraprofessional is a title for someone who's not a certified teacher.
So, okay, so that brings my next question, then how many of those in our group that are cert, are certified paraprofessional?
Well, they, they would be, there are some, there's an older paraprofessional certification, which is now sort of defunct, that some still have. But some of the paraprofessionals are certified teachers or on the verge of certification as teachers. It's, it's not relevant to being a paraprofessional, but it certainly helps us, it makes us stronger.
Any more comment? Well, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public session?
So move.
All in favor?